All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have four. Appreciate you coming. Thank you. Appreciate the director and Mr. Holly and Mr. Guster here to give the city council presentation on the Civil Rights Commission. So, Mr. Guster, if you'd like to have any words, otherwise we're happy to listen to your presentation.
No, I'm gonna go ahead and let Director Lacy take it over. But I will say one of the things that, since I've been the chair of the Davenport Civil Rights Commission, is seek to set it on a path to make a better relationship with people in City Hall. And we haven't been able to do that up to this point. And I got my reservation as to why or why not. It has not happened. And today, I hope, when we leave here, is that some things are very clear and that we are able to do that because of the, I guess I would say, because of the tension between this office and the staff in City Hall. And to me, it's very clear what the problem is. And I'll sit down and I'm willing to talk to anybody about that. But I can tell you, I am frustrated about where we are at with the Civil Rights Commission, simply because at every point and every junction that we try to do business with the city staff, we are just hit all kind of impediments. And at every angle, we just get interference. And I'm looking for that to stop. And I want people to put whatever was in the past behind and quit looking in the rearview mirror. And let's do business, let's do the business that would help to make this city a better place for all of us to live here, just not the few. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, my name is Latrice Lacy. For those who don't know, I'm the director of the commission. So, as Commissioner Guster said, we requested a meeting with the council just to kind of open the lines of communication, seeking to create kind of more open relationships, better relationships. And I had spoken to Alderwoman Newton, and she kind of indicated that maybe some of the new council members may not even be familiar with what our office does exactly. So, maybe that would be good to kind of give an overview of exactly what the commission does. So, we have a very brief overview. I don't want to say too much. Everyone's time today. There's a copy of the PowerPoint there for everyone. So, kind of just going over what the Davenport Civil Rights Commission is, we're an administrative agency, a law enforcement agency. We enforce the Davenport Civil Rights Ordinance, the Iowa Civil Rights Act, Title VII of the U.S. Civil Rights Act, Title VIII, and the ADA. We investigate complaints of unlawful discrimination. We can initiate our own complaints of unlawful discrimination. And then we provide education and outreach to the community about civil rights protection. So, if there are entities within the city of Davenport who want training on things that are covered under our ordinance, we can go out and do those. If there are entities that are outside of the city of Davenport, we charge them to come out and do trainings, but we can do those as well. So, we're, again, a law enforcement agency. We're guided by the seven commissioners who serve without compensation. We have six full-time staff members as of this year, 2.5. We also mediate complaints. So, as soon as a complaint is filed with our office, we offer mediation to allow the parties to have some control over how it could be resolved. If the complaint does not resolve in mediation, then it moves forward to the investigation stage. I'm forgetting the button. So, again, our authority comes from the Iowa Civil Rights Act, which is Iowa Code 216, the Davenport Civil Rights Ordinance, which is 2.58 of the city code. The Fair Housing Act, which is Title VIII, Title VII, which is for employment, and then the ADA for employment protections. So, we have contracts with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, which gives us authority to investigate complaints under Title VIII. And through our contract with HUD, they pay us to investigate complaints that are under both of our jurisdiction and the jurisdiction of HUD. So, if they get complaints that are within the city of Davenport, they typically would transfer those to us. If we get complaints that are outside of the city of Davenport, we would typically transfer those to HUD or to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. And then we would also do the same thing if the complaint is against the city of Davenport, just to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. We have jurisdiction to investigate the city, but we're being retaliated against enough already, so probably gonna need that. And then Title VII, we do the same thing for employment. So, if it's within the city of Davenport, if there's a complaint filed with the EEOC, they would typically transfer that to us. If it's a complaint filed regarding something that's outside of the city of Davenport or something that's over in Illinois, we would transfer that to EEOC, just based on our proximity to Illinois. We're kind of the only office that's around, so if people want to talk to us about it in person, they would typically contact us for EEOC complaints. And we get paid for those complaints as well. And then through our contract with the EEOC, that gives us authority to enforce the ADA for employment protections. So, the commission is an independent administrative agency, and we have authority to proceed independently of the city government and exercising its powers. So, that means that the commission is the entity within the city of Davenport that has authority to enforce the Davenport Civil Rights Ordinance. They can exercise that authority independently of the city. There is an exhaustion requirement for civil rights complaints, so people cannot just take their complaint and go to court. If they want to, they have to file with an administrative agency prior to doing that. So, that requires them to file either with the local, state, or federal agency prior to them being able to seek remedies in court. So, even if they don't want to wait for the train process to play out, they do have to start out with whatever the administrative agency is. So, for our structure, the mayor appoints the commissioners, who are then approved by the city council, and that's pursuant to the ordinance. The commissioners have to be broadly representative of the community, of the various racial, religious, cultural, and social groups within the city. The commissioners appoint and supervise the director, who manages the office. The commissioners are city officers who are kind of under the supervision of the mayor. The director performs their duties in accordance with the legislative and budgetary direction of the council. So, that means that what the ordinance says, my duties are, those are there. And then however much money the council affords to the commission, that's how much we get to spend. And then I'm operating under the executive and administrative direction of the commission. So, the things that supervise that is the commission. So, with that out of the way, some of the concerns that the commission sought to meet with council about was really kind of the ongoing staff mistreatment, which has really caused attrition within our office. There has been a campaign of harassment going on against myself and some of the other staff members. And we have filed internal complaints. We've reached out to some elected officials. But it has caused people to leave the agency. And so, we are seeking some sort of intervention from council to address that. There seems to be maybe an issue rooted in the separation of powers that is created within the city. So, with the kind of independence of the agency, that seems to have caused some friction with certain staff members and maybe people under their supervision. And maybe that will change with new direction leading the city. But we would like to seek council's assistance in creating a change in that relationship. So, some of the things that Commissioner Guster was referencing, where, you know, each thing that we do, there is something there to kind of interfere or frustrate the mission of the agency. It wastes so much staff time for us to have to spend time documenting concerns, keeping records of every little thing, because we will later be accused of doing something by city staff. And it doesn't make sense. It's a waste of taxpayer dollars. It's a waste of our time. It's a waste of the staff who are doing it. But it interferes with us performing our job. So, there have been countless examples of city staff usurping the authority of the commissioners. So, if the commissioners vote on something, if they implement something, that's what's supposed to happen. But city staff has interfered with that. There are things that are within my authority to do, and I will authorize them, and city staff will not process it. So, they'll just sit off. So, that's something that they do not have authority to do, but they just do because they have authority within the city's systems to do it, so to just not process something because I don't have the requisite authority or the system or authorization within the system. And so, the commission is really seeking city council intervention to kind of stop that kind of behavior from going on, because it interferes with us being able to perform our job. One of the instances of kind of this, like, bullying and ostracism is we don't get updates on things that are going on. So, when the city received ARPA funding, we didn't have an opportunity to apply to get any of the ARPA funding, even though our mission is something that would be really directly within the scope of the usage of ARPA funds. But we just weren't invited to submit anything, to request any of that. We don't have authority to, we're under the city's tax ID number, but we don't have authorization under the grants.gov site to apply for funding. We could become a fifth agency and get additional funding directly from HUD and not have to request additional money from city council. But we've been refused the ability to be an agency to submit rent requests through the site. We have been excluded from the office updates. So, every other department in City Hall has security upgrades, so they can see who's visiting them, people can't get in, it's a glass door, there's bulletproof glass. We don't have anything. And one of the commissioners who I repeatedly complained about, and I thought was a security risk, physically assaulted one of our staff members because of these security issues. That was not addressed by anyone within the city, even though it was reported to the mayor. This person wasn't banned from City Hall. They weren't banned from serving on another commission. So, these kinds of things that have just been going on, and they create trauma for myself and our staff, but then they also make people not want to work there. And it creates an incredibly stressful working environment in a situation where you're already kind of handling high-stress situations and situations where you're really kind of getting secondhand trauma from the subject matter that you're dealing with in the first place. So, we are right now in the process of getting some of the physical upgrades that every other department has gotten, but this is now 2024, and everyone else has gotten them years ago. So, we've just been required to go without those for years, and everyone else has had them. So, those were kind of, again, some of the concerns that we have. Obviously, it's not, we tried not to make an exhaustive list to be here all day, but it really just goes back to this kind of ongoing discourse, discord between city staff and our office. And we would like to seek some sort of resolution to move the situation forward so that we can do our jobs. Do you have?
Ms. Moore, please. So, on the upgrades, you guys know that's in process and that's happening, and it's about $150,000, and that's in process to happen.
What are, what are the specific upgrades that are occurring?
I do not have the whole details on that project. The budgetary estimate is...
Was $150,000. And that's being, my understanding is being developed, or it's gonna happen.
They're adding a window to our office so that the administrative assistant can see who's coming in. And then they are giving us new furniture, because we don't have any new furniture in any of our offices or in the conference room. And then they are changing the conference room to close off a part of it, to make it into a storage space, because city staff removed all of our stuff from the city hall's storage space and just put it in our conference room.
Is there a conference room back in, like, a little bit, I mean, I've never been in there. I just see the little, you know, there's glass door, and then there's a little room, and then there's two doors. Okay.
Okay, this, this is being done currently. But this goes back to the timeliness and the exclusion of the commission, when all these things were being done at the time that they were necessary. Now, all this is after the fact, after numerous complaints and ill raising. And all of a sudden, now, at the end, everything, everybody else has been taken care of, and all of a sudden, you look back and say, oh, yeah, we gotta take care of the rattling can, you know, the nosegakers. So, it's about the timeliness and addressing our needs along with the needs of all the other entities that are a part of this administration. And that's, that's part of the problem. I mean, you give us this stuff now, you say it's being done, great thing to do. But the problem, that's elephant in a room, that's not being addressed, is the fact that it's being overlooked. The commission is, is a stepchild. It appears to be, and it's not being included and has a seat at the table that we should. And it's the problem of, you know, what is the authority, what's the relationship with the commission and the outline of the power? How do we relate? How do we work together? You know, what are those things? So, I mean, when it comes down to it, it's not about getting furniture and security, but having a seat at the table, to be included. And, you know, we can get this stuff now, but we still have to go back and address that relationship, establish a working relationship to, whereas the commission has the authority that the commission should have. And, you know, basically, we don't feel that it has the authority. The authority is being circumvented. You know, decisions we make are not being executed. People, staff, whoever are making decisions, probably outside of your purview, I really don't know. But the stuff is not going forward that should be, it's being delayed, omitted, or just definitely not addressed. So, I mean, this is the baseline, the root cause of whatever the conditions are, so we really need to get down, down to that. You know, the fact that we're getting that, we're getting the furniture and all that, that means nothing. You know, it really does, because of how long it took to get it and what it took to get to that point. It's kind of like, okay, you know, I threw your bone down.
I need to add something to that. And I'm gonna be a little bit open about, and I'll talk specifically. I'll talk city attorney, I'll talk about the city administrator. That being probably one of the biggest impediments within the civil rights office, because that's where it all started, that's where it continued to fester. And so, I hope that, is the city attorney in here?
The guy that's filling in.
Which city attorney?
I heard it's the city attorney.
I heard it's the city attorney.
There is none.
We don't have a new city attorney now. Lana Monmon's filling in, Mr. Guster. We've hired a corporate counsel, they start next week.
Okay. Well, I hope whoever's the new city attorney act as a city attorney and would, that they would conduct themselves more appropriately in terms of being more professional, for lack of another word I would like to use. I would hope that the city administrator, whoever that person may be, be an individual that's open-minded and that's fair and that includes Director Lacy in her staff calls. I hope that that's a person that would have a pretty good relationship moving forward so that we can do business like that we need to do to take care of discrimination that takes place. And I'll go even a little bit further, that discrimination that takes place within Davenport, because it's rich, and I deal with discrimination complaints all the time. And not necessarily against the city, but the city has got a problem with respect to blacks' employment within the city department. They ought, they ought to try as hard as they can to begin to hire more blacks within the city of Davenport, City Hall, so that it represents the population of Davenport. For a long time, it's been literally white down there. Long time. So, you know, this cousin and brother, and then, let me just leave that alone. I want a better relationship, guys, for Mrs. Lacy. And the things that happened with Mrs. Lacy back two or three years ago, when whatever incident happened, I couldn't care less about that. I went in down there with an open mind, and to this day, I haven't got any cooperation. I've got little, well, I can't say no cooperation, I've got little to none. I'm told things, and I'm an individual, I hate to be lied to my face, I really do. That bothers me bad. It really just, it burns me up, really. So, I, I, I hope that moving forward, that your questions in City Hall and the city council may would be a little bit more inquisitive about, am I getting the right information about the Davenport Civil Rights Commission? I hope that takes place, because I want to see the correct funding for that place, or it needs to have the correct funding. And, ma'am, I'm not going, I'm not down here to bash the mayor, because they've done some increases here recently and stuff, so, but it needs to do, it needs to be built because of the workload that she has. And I've seen, when I first came in, the hostility that was, that was level at her, and, 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 you know, I had to take a step back to kind of assess really what was happening from every angle. And the angles that I see is that it's enough that the relationship, we just gotta let that other mess go. And I've seen that that's where the main problem is. So, I hope that that can, that can stop, if that makes any sense.
Anyone else here?
Mayor, sorry. Please, can you go around and have everybody in?
My name is Charlene Upchurch-Taylor.
Mike Mattson, Mayor Davenport.
Robert Marshall, Dana Lard.
Nicole Wilson, I guess, acting city administrator, effective writing.
Kyle Britt, Alderman at large.
Jasmine Alderwoman at large.
Rick Dunne, First Ward.
Paul Ranar, Three Fourth.
Tim Dunn, Second Ward.
Michelle Lynch, Chautauqua, Seventh Ward.
Jade Brookholder, Fourth Ward, Alderwoman.
Ben Jokic, Sixth Ward, Alderman.
Tim Kelly, Fifth Ward, Alderman.
Erin Yen, Seventh Ward, Alderman.
Frank Holly, Commissioner.
Mike Guster, I'm the chair for the Davenport Civil Rights. I'm also the president for the MetroCard, for the NWA CP.
Latrice Lacy.
Ethelene Boyd, Commissioner. I was just gonna say, excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Just get everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. Giovanni, your name is the communications associate.
Sarah Watson, reporter with the Puppi Tikes.
Ma'am.
Citizen interested.
Kim.
Am the citizen interested in this topic?
Yeah, DAT, yeah.
Joyce Miller. Thank you.
Can I say I'm Commissioner also?
Ma'am.
Ethelene Boyd, and I want to say I'm sorry for being late, but I got here exactly at four and couldn't get in until, until then, till I entered. I'd just like to say, well, I'm so glad that our, our chairperson and Commissioner Holly shared what they shared at the end, because that showed me that I, it brought me up so that I wouldn't be sharing the same questions and concerns that I had when I became a commissioner the first time over 40 years ago. And I chaired the Civil Rights Commission back in 1977. And I've got, I've had a chance, this is my second term, I guess, and I've had the, I've had the benefit, I guess, of seeing how things was, were, how they were back in 1977, where, you know, giving, at a different point than we're at now, and how things are now. It was, and I totally agree with what our three people from the commission have said while I was in here. But we did, but I agree that, looking back over 40 years, we haven't gotten as far as I had hoped when I, when I got started. But I'm so happy that we were able to meet together now and that you listened to our concerns like you are. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay.
I have a question. What do you think, what would you like to see, or what do you think would, would bring unity? And I'm learning, I don't know anything about what Mr. Guster mentioned, some incident in the past with Director Lacy. This is some totally new to all of us, and I'm just coming in really unbiased and trying to understand how these pieces come together. But obviously, there's history here, and I'm just trying to understand if there's any suggestions on what could be done to where there aren't bad feelings on either side, and if we can find a way where it feels as, if there is more inclusion, I guess. What types of things, could you give examples of some things you would like to see?
Well, I'd like to say, first of all, you say that there are some bad things on either side. If the city has some things to address with the commission, by all means. But we have accumulated a number of instances and occurrences of irregular activities and happenings with actions that we've taken, demands, requests, interventions, that are not necessarily a part of policy, routine policy, they're not necessarily the way things are done with other segments of the city. So, it's not that, it's these things, and we, all this is documented. So, understanding that everybody here may not be totally familiar with all the things going on, but if we were, and that's why Director Lacy said, you know, she didn't want to drag this out, so there was no need to bring all that in. But it's something that needs to be addressed or reviewed, and before you can really make decisions or try to move forward, you didn't really, really need to understand what's transpiring. And there is really a lack of a working relationship, whereas it's been established what, what the authority of the commission is and the relationship with the city, and how that's being usurped and circumvented. And in some cases, the commission is not allowed to perform their job and to do what we, you know, we're just here as an independent entity to make sure, as Mike said, that, you know, there's, things are done right, there's no discrimination, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have nothing to gain, we, you know, we don't have an agenda other than exercising that. But there's a lot of things going on, so we want to get those things out to where it can be addressed, and we can establish a working relationship, we can establish some policies, some procedures, some boundaries, some order as to how we work together, who has authority, who can do what, all these things. I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge ask, and the ask has to be defined specifically.
Could we receive copies of the list, or the, or, you know, do you have examples to fully understand the scope of what, of what's happened and what needs to be, I guess, repaired or amended? I feel like I need something to read, so I...
Let me jump in there. Look, I, here I go. Something that's small and simple that could be, how many times have we gone somewhere and it's all the directors of the city, but Latrice is not there represented, and it's always... And it's always a picture of Latrice, and this is the Director of Civil Rights. Let's start there. Let's start that if all the Directors are in the room, where's Latrice?
Because it creates the impression that I was invited and I didn't come.
Right.
Whereas it's me not being invited.
So, I didn't know anything about civil rights when I became an Alderman. It was a picture of Latrice and I was like, okay, where's she at? So, how do you have all the Directors introducing theirself or like at, um, Citizen U? Things of that nature that we don't realize that how big that is, that when you have all the Directors in the room introducing theirself, where's Latrice? Start there. Start there.
It's, it's really just a bunch of little things, like a couple of months ago, for whatever reason, our authorizations were changed and we weren't allowed to use the elevator to come in and out of the different floors of City Hall. And who do you, who do you get to ask to help you with these issues? So, we asked the Public Works Employee who is in charge of it. He ignored me. And I found out...
Hold, 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 hold up. I, I, I don't wanna, I, I, I don't, I don't want to go there.
Right.
Because that, that's not necessary and, and, uh...
It doesn't, it's one person.
That's digging down. I don't get down into weeds there today. But, but, but let me tell you, uh, I, 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 I think what has to happen is it's gotta be a better relationship and, and I'm giving you what the, 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 the top part of it. And, uh, and I think Alderman Kelly hit something on the there, um, 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 for you. If you had seen her, that ought to cause something to go off in, in your mind, Alderman mentioned. So, and, and the first thing I said on, one of the first things I said when I started talking is you ought to be including staff calls. That was one of the first things I said, and that begins to start the process, uh, for information sharing, uh, within the, uh, within City Hall. And then it ought to be a clear understanding about the staff, understanding the ordinance, about the clear lines of duty, of what the Civil Rights Office stands for. And then sometimes the Civil Rights Office has to file complaints that people don't like. People don't like sometime. They have to talk about subjects that people don't like and gets uncomfortable with. I talk to people all the time of, on subjects that are uncomfortable. I don't like them, but I've lived them for sixty-eight years. I don't want this to be, uh, uh, guys... I am frustrated today. I really am. And, and I, and you probably can tell by the tone of my voice, and, and I'm frustrated because it shouldn't come to this. It shouldn't. But I want you to know I'm mad as hell. And, and, and the reason why I'm like this is because I may, I put these complaints in the right places and haven't gotten nothing. And you know what it makes me believe? I don't care. That you look at me and you don't give a rat about who, about, about me as an individual. That's what I believe. And so, I'm asking for better relationship, inclusion, working relationship. Stop to harass me. Tell the staff to work the issues that the Director sent to them to work them. That's within, within her authority to do.
And I want to jump in one last time and I swear I'm done. You know what you guys do as my counterparts? You guys are real easy to, do you know, I listen to some, y'all know me, here, come. I'll listen to some bullshit, but sometimes you have to be able to walk away. And what I'm telling you, there's people that are sitting at this table that have tried to put poison and venom in me when it comes to the civil, I'm just like, okay, but that's not what we're here for. So, do you know how many times I've had to re-divert a conversation because somebody wants to tell me about when Director Lacy this, when Director Lacy that, when Director Lacy was... I don't need to hear all that. I, that's not what I came here for. But that's the first thing that you want to tell me as opposed to saying, hey, the Civil Rights lost an employee, hey, the Civil Rights this, that, and the third. I don't need to know about an arrest list. I don't need to know about who's married, who's not married, who's leaving. I don't need to know about Facebook. I don't need to know about that stuff. What does that do for us? What does it do for us? And then when we sit there and listen to these conversations, y'all get mad at me because I like to cuss, but stop listening to that bullshit. What I'm telling you, what does that have to do with us governing the city when we have to hear about an employee on Facebook? You guys are shaking your heads, but you, listen, I'm telling you, because I've had to walk away from this conversation, I don't know how many numerous amounts of times, and I'm thinking to myself, he's in California now. Why are we still talking about Facebook? And y'all know I'll name drop. If you need to hear him, I'm just telling you, be better. I shake your head, you can shake your head, but I'm just telling you, isn't it, you're not tired of it? You're not tired of my mouth? You guys aren't tired of me hearing that what I get disgusted with, because they're being nice. I get disgusted because I have to live this. Who's in court right now? I'm just saying, it's okay to put yourself in a position because it doesn't affect you. Because look at the landscape of the room. It doesn't affect a lot of you guys, so you never will get it. I don't want you to get it, but I want you to take a step back and kind of go, hmm, okay. Because you don't get it. If you don't get it, ask a question. Why do you guys, why do we sit in a position that we still talk about Facebook? Why do we sit in a position and still talk about somebody getting arrested when they defended theirself? Why are we still in these conversations? Is that twenty twenty-four? No, that's a past. And if you guys are digging that past, let's dig up some of our past. Y'all don't want me to talk about what the mayor did. Y'all don't want me to tell what I witnessed at Paul Ryan Harris. You don't want to hear all that stuff, but I'm just saying, we're not talking about other individuals, we're talking about this one. Why are we constantly talking about the Civil Rights Department? Why?
Well, we have to try to move forward.
How is that, how do we move forward, Mr. Holly? Is what, you know what I'm saying?
We're trying to get to that point. We're trying to establish, uh, the root cause of the issues and, you know...
I don't got them.
In order to, in order to solve anything, you have to figure out what the problem is to move forward and, and having those relationships and, and inclusion and, and recognition. And that, that's one of the problems. I, I, I don't know if the Commission is being recognized as the agency that is supposed to be, given the autonomy and the authority that it should have. And then, and we've worked with the different levels of, of the city administration and, and we run into those roadblocks and, and then there's no recourse. Nothing happens. It, it continues. Uh, we're relegated to the sidelines, we're pushed back and, you know, we, we just don't feel like, you know, we're, we're given a due diligence as, as we try to, as we try to operate and exist within this Davenport, uh, city structure. Uh, it's, we're an independent administrative agency and we have the authority to proceed independently from the city government in exercising, uh, our powers. And so, we need to have exclusion, we need to have the authority, and we need to establish those relationships that we can do that with. Without those relationships, I mean, there's nothing we can do if we don't have the support.
Can I say something? So, the supervisor of the Commissioners is me? Have I told you ever you can't do something?
That's, that's not the point, Mike.
Okay. When you've asked us to talk to me, have you, have you talked to me? Have you, when you've asked to discuss something with me as Administrator, have we told you no? No. We, in fact, the one, the specific one we can talk about, if you'd like to talk about, we did, I agree with that. We should move forward, but the specific one, when you asked to discuss with Ms., uh, Merritt and I about five specific concerns, we met the next day. And she answered those questions that, at that meeting. I agree, some of those up there are not specifically in yet, but we immediately started the process to do those. I don't believe at any time I've ever said anything that you can't do, and I try my best to stay out of your business so that you can be independent, and I defend that as best as I can. Now, that's all I'll say. I'm happy to move forward and continue to let you be independent and do your business. And, and I only offer that if there's ever concern, you know my number.
I'll, 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 I'll finish now.
Hold, hold, wait, let me, let me respond to that. Mayor, I have a great respect for you and everyone in here. Let me respectfully say we talked about that in November of twenty-three.
Right, I agree.
November twenty-three. The old, the old stuff and everything is still there.
So, I don't know about those, because I don't know what you're saying. If you're talking about this, I agree with you, but the City Attorney, the Council...
I'm not talking about the mayor when I'm talking about City Hall. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking of the mayor. I'm not speaking about the mayor when I'm talking about City Hall, I'm talking about the city's staff.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Some of those people are not here now, we're moving on and getting newbie.
Yeah, yeah, but we haven't changed the, we haven't changed the, the overall philosophy, the way things are done. You know, we have to change that. You can replace people, but until, if that changes, it will always be the same. You put somebody else in there and it continues, the same mentality. And so, you know, all these things have been ongoing for a long time. And, and, you know, I'm like Mike, I have no disrespect to you. I mean, I'm like this Mike, not that Mike, but no disrespect to you, but these things have been ongoing for, for, for some time. So, at some, at what point do we start to address them? And, and, you know, I, I totally, totally agree. And a lot of things are happening below you, below your level, and it may never get to you, but at some point, you know, you have to change that mentality. We have to change, and, and as Mike said, it's, it's not directly towards you, but it's, that, that...
Um, I, I know it's not as simple as my view lists. Um, I've been making one, you know, as we've been talking. Um, we are going forward. I know, I know there are old wounds that, I'll, I mean, it's hard to let go of old wounds, um, but looking forward with new, a new city administrator, with a completely new, a completely new city legal department, like completely new. Some of the things I've jotted down, and I guess I'm trying to think about going forward, if we're looking to the future, what does that look like very specifically, is staff calls, that the, the, the Director at least be invited. And, I mean, I think one of the issues, I'm not defending any past practices, is that, um, I think the process in the past with staff calls were direct reports, but that excludes people. That excludes civil rights and it excludes the library. So, going forward, things that would, at least in this new, we have no, a new person in that position, um, participation in staff calls, participation in any kind of projects that the city does that is outreach to the public, that would include Davenport U, that would include partying in the park, or any, any other kind of thing. Claire, I've heard, um, from you, and I don't know what it means, um, but clarifying the lines of authority, um, right? And I don't know, and I don't know what that means.
That's the ordinance, that's the ordinance.
Exactly. So, I don't know what, I don't know personally what that, and I understand making sure that, that, uh, Director Lacy is at the table in staff calls. I, I understand that one, I understand inclusion. I don't, I, I don't specifically know what that means, but I've heard lines of authority. What other things would start to change the trajectory of this?
The fact that, budget, budget? I don't think, uh, I think the other Directors or individual departments have been, have participated in budgets, but not this year, August or June.
Okay. So, budget, participating in budgets at whatever level, other departments participating in budgets?
You know, I, I, and I'm smart enough to know just because you participate in budgets, that don't mean you get more money, but, uh, so, but, uh...
But you get, you get what you're getting.
But, but if you're not at the table, you don't get anything. You don't get the crap, so, uh, that, that needs to happen.
I mean, in some ways, if you look structurally, the Civil Rights Commission is just like the library. You have, it has its own set of board trustees, it hires its own Director, it has to go through the budgeting process of the city. So, there's, the parallel I've always seen is that it doesn't report to the city, that the Library Director, as, as, as Director Lacy does not report to the city manager. Um, so there are parallels in some ways, so...
But let, let, let me stop you right there.
Right.
But, 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 but we do report to them because...
Right.
We, we do report to them because, uh, we can't do anything without, we can't do a hire without, uh, them approving it. We, 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 we can't, uh, 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 do certain purchases on a, a credit card without them kicking something back, saying that it was something illegal, illegal purchase when it was not.
Well, well, I, I can't, see, you're going to the back, but...
Well, you asked me, Troy.
No, I understand, no, I mean, I'm going forward. I mean, I believe the library has the same guidelines in terms of purchasing, in terms of hiring. They go through that process. I know there's many more people in the library, which makes it more...
But, 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 but let me tell you, my job as manager of, of, of a half a billion dollar, a budget a year, I, 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 I was the credit card person that was responsible for managing many credit cards and very familiar with what the credit card process. And I don't want to get down into weeds, and I shouldn't even go, shouldn't even went there, but I know the process and I know it well. And some of the stuff that they kicking back, talking about it was illegal, which is something I believe in.
I, I, I don't, I don't know the structure of the library first, first of all, so I, I, that means nothing to me because I can't make a, a comparison. Is the library having any of these issues? Have, do they have any complaints? Uh, uh, have, have they, do they, they haven't had a seat at the table because obviously they're excluded based on some criteria or...
The library is invited to the department.
Oh, it is, so, so, so there, there you go, that's, that's another parallel that we're not meeting.
See, I did not, I did not think they were...
Well, I, I don't know, I, I don't know, so I really can't make a comparison to the library. So, so, you know, that's totally unfair for me. Uh, you know, what we're trying to deal with here is, and, and, you know, we're, we're not trying to, we're just saying, these are, the issues, these are things that are happening. These are, are examples of what we're facing and, and that's why we, we have this feeling that we have because, I mean, this is for real. This is not makeup, you know, we're not creating this. Every example that we had, that we, we ran into roadblocks and things being thwarted, uh, we, we just, we, we, we want that inclusion. We want to be recognized, we want to have the authority that we were, were designed to have so we can function and do what we're supposed to be doing.
So, and just from listening, Director Lacy needs to be regarded like any other Director of any other department within the city. She needs that same respect of her authority, um, how she runs her department, um, being a part of the budget, being invited to different functions or meetings, um...
Same privileges.
Same privileges that every other Director gets. That's what I'm understanding and, and that should have been a given.
Say that again.
That should, that should have been a given from the very start.
Can I hear that one more time?
It should have been a given.
It's just like walking and breathing. I mean, th, these are things that should come naturally. We don't have to get up and fight for, for, to, to, for air. I mean, I wake up and, you know, and I can breathe, it should be there for me. Nobody should take it away, nobody should put a plastic bag over my head to prevent me from getting it. But this, this is the kind of situation we're in.
And she's been with the city for how long?
Ten years.
Ten years.
So, you're one of the oldest...
Directors.
Oldest directors that the city has.
Longest tenured.
Long, okay, longest tenure. My place is bad.
And then, and then we get into that, and then you get into salaries and stuff like that. I mean, you know, and, and you know you want to get into that. See, there's so many things that, 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 you know, could be thrown in it. We're not trying to throw all those things in and get down into the weeds.
But she should have the same respect.
Mr. Holly, you, you guys authorized her salary increase. Roger that? That's your authority? You did that?
Absolutely. You did that.
Ms. Lacy, is it true that you and Ms. Merritt, CFO, talked your budget one-on-one to work, to discuss that and, and get your, uh, request in?
You brought the budget up.
Is that true? You and Ms. Merritt talked one-on-one? You're saying it's not true?
No, we meet with city staff.
You don't meet with the CFO? Okay, then I have misinformation? I don't think that's true.
If I could go back...
I think she meets with you.
So, like, let's point that out. You're just, you're accusing me of lying.
No, I, I just, I said that's my misunderstanding that you...
No, he said, I don't think that's true. No, he said, I don't think that's true.
Okay, okay, okay.
I understood that you two met-
He said, he said, I don't think that's true, he said, maybe I was just wrong, I don't think that's true.
Because I was told that you meet-
No, 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 let me finish speaking. You just accused me of lying in this public meeting, because you believed what you were told over what I'm telling you.
I did believe that you were meeting with them.
But you literally just had a meeting with Alderwoman Newton and I, a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed who we met with for our budget.
That's right.
And, and it was never mentioned that Mallory Merritt was in that meeting. So you should be aware of who participated in the meeting, because we just talked about it.
Okay.
But instead, you just said what?
I, I think you two met directly on the budget.
No, we don't, and I tell you that.
Thank you. I-
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Guster. I, I do want to go back to what Alderwoman McGinnis said, because I, I do think it's important. Um, the difference between, um, the Public Works Director and the Parks Director, et cetera, uh, and the library director and the civil rights director is, the library director and the civil rights director do not report to the city administrator, cannot be fired by the city administrator, right? So they, they, uh, they, uh, report to their commission, uh, which is totally different. And so, I, I, I think we need to understand that as, as, as a council and as a commission, that there is a difference there. Now, in, in my opinion, the, the library commissioner, uh, or the director of the library, Jeff, and the director of the Civil Rights Commission should be treated the same way, um, because they, they have a similar setup. As far as budget goes and staff meeting goes, and, uh, the new incoming city administrator will have to, to have to settle that. Um, you know, I've now been around almost ten years as well, right? And, and so, there's a lot of new, there's a lot of new faces. Um, there was a lot of trust that was lost. I've kind of been an outsider on this, I've never been the liaison with the Civil Rights Commission. Um, I've not been the point person for that, so I haven't dealt with it. Um, but at one point, there was trust lost on both sides, and it is very hard to get that trust back once that trust is lost. And that's really what we're, we're up against. And I, I believe you, what you say, your goal is to, to mend those fences and get the, the two parts back together. A lot of the characters are gone, but not all of the characters are gone. And the wounds are very deep for people who were affected, and it's very hard to, 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 to heal those wounds. That's what I'll say.
I, 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 I'll, I'll respond to that by saying this. When you pay people tax dollars, I don't care how deep the wound is, and, and I'm not being smart or anything. Uh, 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 and, and I, I just want to be very clear, as a manager, when I manage people, I expect them to perform a job. Regardless of whether you like Mike Guster or not. I, 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 my, my job when I worked at federal government was to support soldiers. I care less about how many you didn't like or what you didn't like about it. Your job is to do that, and, and, and if you didn't like Sally over here, then I'm sorry. But, uh, if, 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 if somewhere down the line, if you're not performing that particular job, and somebody over here is not getting that, then it's going to show up in some paper somewhere, uh, that I'm going to give you. And you either going to not be there, or you're going to either do better in that particular job, because that's what I'm paying you to do. So, I, I hear what you're saying, so, but-
So, respectively, I would say, it's much deeper than that, and it's on both sides of the fence.
I, 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 I hear what you're saying, but there is, the validity behind that is that what is, that there is pay involved here, taxpayer dollars. And I hear what you're saying. So, uh, uh, we'll have to agree to disagree on that one, because I stern, firmly believe that when I'm paying you to do a job, whoever is that manager, whoever is responsible for managing that person, city council, city administrator, then it's their job to have that person do, is a her job.
And, and I, I, I just want to say, that culture, I mean, and this is what we're talking about, we, we're talking about the-
The king and queen culture, culture.
That we're operating in, that culture ha- has to change. And, and you keep using the library as an example, the, the only similarity that I can see the library to the Civil Rights Commission is, they don't report to the city administrator. Their functions and mission is totally different, uh, the library, I, I really don't know what they do. But there's, there, to me, there's no similarity in how they operate and, and what they do.
I just, I, I just meant this, right?
No, no, that's, that's, I, 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 I get, I, I get that, but I just want to make sure that we don't take that-
No, they're, they're totally different missions.
But, yeah, but, but the culture-
There's similar in that the state of Iowa said, we, we don't want the, the city and the city council setting the budget and meddling in your, your affairs as much as we're, we're separating-
I, I get, and once, once we establish it, and then we have that culture, that even when you take pieces out and you put pieces back in, and you put them back into the same culture, guess what? You get assimilated back into that, and you become a part of that same culture, and you start to do, well, you like it or not, you know, the, the majority rules, and you do what everybody else does. So unless the culture changes, we're always going to have this situation. You, you talk about both sides, you know, the commission is, is in a survival mode. You know, when you got people trying to stop you and, and stopping your, your communications and stuff from going forward, hey, we're, we're in survival mode. So, so until the culture changes, until somebody really realizes, hey, we, we got a problem here, you know, self-reflection, and, and before I can, I can try to change stuff. I mean, we can talk about it all day long, we can sit and talk, talk, this is not the beginning of this issue, it's been here for a long time. It's been here for a long time, and it will stay and remain here unless somebody has the nerve to decide, hey, we, we really need to make some practical, objective changes, you know, we, we need to look within, and, and, I, I mean, it's, and those are simple things to do.
Hold on, Mr. Holly, so let me, so I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but here I go again. So Kyle, this is what I have a problem with, you're saying on both sides, because, because I'm telling you, the interesting part for me is, why are we still holding conversations about things that, that happened? So I hear what you're saying, both parts, so what do you want the commission to say, I'm sorry?
If I may, I-
No, no, but I'm just saying, I, I'm listening to what you guys are saying, and I, I don't want to give you specific examples, but I can give you examples, but, but the way that you just, but the way, hold on, let me finish.
We're not going to fight you.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, you're going to let me finish saying what I'm saying.
Absolutely, sir.
So what I'm saying is, when you're saying on both sides, that's how we have to let some things go. We actually need to say, okay, things did happen on both sides, and feelings were hurt, but let's move forward. But as opposed to just, because I'm telling you, I have no problem giving examples, and I know you guys don't want that, but I'm just telling you, what I've got to witness in my time, in my tenure, why, why do I need to hear this on a normal basis? This is not stuff that's not happening right now, this is stuff that happened, but I still get to hear about it from some of the people that I sit next to. So what does that tell you, Kyle? How, how do we move forward when you gaslight and say both sides? Because that's gaslighting, as, it, it is. As opposed to saying, how do we move for, that's gaslighting, it is. But this is what I'm trying to explain to you guys, for the people in the room that aren't of color, this is the piece that you won't get, because you will never get, you will never understand. So just the words that you choose says you're gaslighting, because you personally don't want to move forward. That's what, I'm just going by what you said now. That's, that's all I'm saying, going by what you said is what I'm taking.
Okay, I don't know how to interpret what I said, but, but-
Am I the only one that feels that way?
No, I agree, because I, if, when you say it's on both sides, and it's been ongoing, and there are people who've been here. Give an example of something that the commission is doing to interfere with city staff doing their jobs. There are none.
I'm not, I'm not here to-
So there is not an issue on both sides, because I'm being made to-
I was just going to allow, I'm not here to argue, I'm just giving you a point.
So, Mr. Guster, I think you did, trust was lost among people-
We get that, you said both sides.
On both sides, it was, I watched it.
And I'll take, me too.
And so, and it's very hard to mend those fences.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a lot of new faces in the room, which should give you a little hope that it can be done.
Yeah, but if we're still having old conversations-
My apologies.
It, it is, because that's an old conversation. How do we move past an old-
We're not allowed to talk about the past.
I, I didn't say that, but I'm just saying, why is it a continuous conversation about the past? Help me with that.
Well, let's not lose sight of why we're here.
No, 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 how, why are we still talking about the past if we're trying to move forward?
I think you put some examples of what we need to do to work with you better, and I think we need to work on doing that.
Let me, let, let, let me just say one thing, and I think we're going to close this out, and stuff, because I got another meeting.
Ms. Jasmine called the meeting, so if you have anything else, so, Ms. Newt did, so-
I, I greatly appreciate the sincerity of everybody's conversation. The honesty behind it, uh, uh, because that's the only way we can move forward. I appreciate Alderman, uh, uh-
Kelly.
Kelly, uh, Alderman Grill, Alderman McGinnis, Lynch, all of you guys, I want to get to have anything to say. I appreciate your, your, your presence here today, uh, just to listen to us, and if we can, if we don't do anything else, but start a new relationship in terms of moving forward, that's what I would like to see happen. And, uh, I guarantee you that, uh, we will continue to beat the bushes and, uh, make noise until we get to where we need to be at. And, uh, I promise you that I'll come see you when, uh, when I need to, and I'll sound the drums. And, uh, I just think that, uh, that important, it's, it's Bella, I've seen Bella times, and we got to get back to those times. So thank you, Mayor.
No, I, Ms. Newt called me, so I want to, she seems to want to talk. So I want to, she hasn't said anything, so it's okay.
Before she summed it up, but before we leave out it-
She summed it up, but-
Well, I mean, she has the last word, I mean, some of you giving her the last word.
Okay.
But, but, but before we move to that point, I mean, uh, we've had a lot of talking today, and a lot of finger pointing, but pressures have risen, and, you know, uh, so with all that being said and done, what is my takeaway from this? Have we made any decisions on anything objective, concrete, moving forward? That's my question. Uh, you know, we do this a lot, we sit down and talk, and we yell and scream, and then we walk out of the room and-
Nothing happens.
Nothing changes. So walking out of the room, before we walk out, what, what is the takeaway from all this? What, how do we sum it up and says, okay, moving forward, at, at least this is my next step?
No, let me, let me, since you said that, what I want to do-
I'm not saying she's an N, but she's next.
I, 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 I want you guys to talk with Frank, what I want to do, I want to get him opportunity to think about it, then we come back and maybe have one more meeting, then we dispatch with women.
That was like, that's, that's, that's- Maybe it can be like, it's been ninety days, and see-
Can I say what it'd be suggested that-
Can we let Alderwoman Newton finish?
There you go.
That's okay.
Go. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a few comments. Um, first, initially Director Lacy had reached out to me, she had some questions regarding finance, and obviously as the chair of finance, she reached out to me and set up a meeting, but I did not have a lot of answers to her questions, so we suggested setting up a finance meeting. But also, because I don't think enough communication takes place between the commission and the council, I thought that would be the first step in the right direction, having this meeting, all of us around the table and continuing it. This is not a one-end, end-all, this is absolutely just the beginning to move us forward, because whether you're commissioner, whether you're an elected official, we are all tasked with moving the city forward, um, not backwards. We did have a finance meeting, and I will say from my perspective, there were certain concerns that were raised, and I will, I will bring one up that I, I personally instantly agree with. If the commission requests a presentation, it shouldn't take over half a year, or, or, you know, almost a year. Okay, with my understanding, there was a request sometime in October of twenty-twenty-three, hasn't taken place yet. But as I made, um, the commissioners, and Director Lacy, and those colleagues around the room at that time aware, I cannot fix anything I don't know, I can't fix a problem that I don't possess, and I believe that would be the same for my colleagues around the table. So in order to move forward, I think we need to open up the line of communication. I do think we should have more joint meetings like this, to where if there are issues, and sometimes they can be a, a simple issue, such as, hey, there's not a direct, clear path of how this happens, you know, if we have a, you know, how we post this position, or how we need to get our, you know, money, if there's, you know, budget amendment, things of that. I think we can work on those things by having a clear line of communication, and I made Director Lacy aware that certainly if there's an issue, do not hesitate to let me know there's an issue. Now, the commission, the council, excuse me, can only direct corporate counsel and the administrator. So obviously, if there's an issue with staff lower below, we're not going to direct the staff. But we certainly, if are made aware of it, we will address it with the city administrator and corporate counsel. Because at the end of the day, we need to move forward as an outsider, look like new to the party, you know, don't know what happened, what didn't happen, and quite frankly, don't care, because what matters for the city is that we move things forward, that we work together, because the commission has an important mission. I mean, and I say that as someone who served on a civil rights organization for ten years and worked hand-in-hand with NAACP, because civil rights are important, so I think we all should be of the mentality of we need to move forward, um, because I, I mean, not backwards, not point fingers at this, that, the other, I think it's, it's all about moving forward together. And I do get the inclination that this new council feels that way. You know, I won't speak for them, I'm just saying, it's my inclination that we do have a majority on council that wants to move the city forward, and wants to have a great relationship with civil rights, with Davenport Library, with everyone. So I appreciate everyone taking the time, and I hope we're able to set a follow-up and continue the conversation so we can start moving our city forward. Thank you.
Any last thoughts?
Let me say this, um-
Ms. Boyd.
This is my, um, it's good to meet with you, I'm glad we're here together, I'm glad we're having this exchange, um, and I'm glad we moved forward, um, in a positive way. I guess I've not been the only seventy-five-year-old in the group, I look at things a different, from a different perspective, but the problems are, um, um, but I, I didn't expect, um, things to be, you know, the same as, um, as they were, uh, back in nineteen-seventy-seven, when I'm going, and I'm, uh, I come in, being on the commission, and seeing what things we were dealing with, how we were proceeding, you know, having to go to the park and do things for the community, and, um, being, um, just doing, uh, a host of things, uh, that pleased me. Um, and, um, I want to, um, I want to, uh, continue, I, I, I remain pleased that, um, we're moving forward in a positive, um, way. But, um, I, I'm, I'm also glad that, you know, you're seeing what, uh, your, your feelings, and I'm glad we're receiving what is being said, uh, nicely, I, I, I appreciate that. Um, but, um, but I think you, you have the gist of it, um, with, um, you know, with what's on the board, and, and we all are open to, um, just a continued, um, discussion, and acting with, um, with respect and promoting the cause. Or let me say one last thing, when I was on the, uh, commission the last time, we only had a few, uh, of the, uh, you know, the classes that we have, that, uh, we work with, getting back on, it has grown, it has really grown. Uh, and so, that in itself makes, um, that, that does something, uh, there. And, uh, I, I, I just want to say, um, uh, to thank you, and to say, uh, you know, please continue on, please continue what you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Guster, anything?
No, I'm, 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 thanks there, but-
And Bill, sir?
I, I, yeah.
Uh, you know, I was just going to suggest is that, you know, if we have a follow-up, obviously, I would, I would assume that the new city administrator, the new corporation council would be part of that.
Yes.
That was all, figured that was-
Just because of like, like, line of expectations, we just get maybe the next ninety days we follow up? So we have a, an actual timeline, and not just an open-ended, where we're going to do it, and then it doesn't happen for six months? I, I, only because of-
I'll just say, I would recommend, we, I agree, wait till the Corporation Council's basically here, City Minister will be here shortly. I would ask that we just wait for that.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
But, done, done.
Which will be shortly.
I want to say this last thing, so you guys don't always think that I'm angry. You guys have to realize, if you look around the room, when you're a white male, that's the majority. I'm not coming for- I'm not coming for you, but you will never understand, you will never understand Alderman Newton, you will never understand Alderman Lynch, and you will never understand Alderman Tim Kelly. So just know that. So know that when you say what you say, if you think it's not offensive, and I'm telling you it's offensive, it's offensive. I'm just being honest. So you guys don't like my honesty, and I'm okay with that, because once again, I didn't come here to be like the constituents voted me in, but I'm just telling you, some things that I have had to hear and listen to over these three years, you guys need to take a step back, seriously, just take a step back if I tell you, dude, that's not it. I'm not being a dick, I'm telling you, that ain't it.
Anyone else? Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, thank you.